Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Monroe County Board of Trustees, Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees Meeting. And I am Chris Harrison, the President of the Board, and I'm just going to go around and have the Board members that are present just state their name so that you are aware who's here.
Michelle Wash.
Jamie Burkhart.
Kathy Loser.
So I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to come and attend this meeting this evening. And so if you hadn't already received a card from Marilyn when you came in, so if you have a question that you would like, a question or two or more that you would like to ask Greer, we will have that time at the end of his presentation. So if you need a card and a pencil, please see Marilyn, and we'll gather those up in a little while and share those with Greer at the end of his presentation. So I'd like to go ahead and formally introduce our candidate for the Director of the Monroe County Public Library upon Marilyn's retirement. This is Greer Carson, our current Assistant Director. And so we are excited to hear from him tonight. The first topic that he's going to be addressing with us is what are the greatest opportunities for the Monroe County Public Library?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, friends, colleagues, fellow Bloomingtonians. I'm Greer Carson, Associate Director here at MCPL, and it's a privilege to speak with you tonight about some of the opportunities we have for library service as we continue through the 2020s and some of the questions that we want to ask ourselves in the process and some important institutional values that guide us along the way. For those of you who don't yet know me, I hope this will serve as a worthy introduction. And for those of you who do, I hope that you'll recognize many of these ideas in the work that we've been doing together. Let's start with opportunities and specifically what I believe are some of the most important for us to pursue. First and foremost is the evolution of our purpose and identity as a public library in the digital age. To provide access to content, this has been our primary traditional role, and for most of our history, it has revolved around a single piece of technology, a very stable and successful technology that still plays a crucial role in our society. But we have now entered an age of disruption characterized by exponential rates of technological change, which force us to work and to communicate in new nonlinear ways. Though worthy of the reverence we share for its magic and its history, the book is no longer at the center of our world. The charge of a 21st century library is to further understand this shift and, more importantly, how it informs our community's needs and how we can continue to embrace the many opportunities for diversifying the collections and resources that we provide. We are also charged with helping our community understand and embrace this shift. Like many of our peer libraries, we've invested in this change by incorporating not only new formats, both physical and digital, but also new resources that are less about consumption of content and more about experiences and use. I like to ask questions, and this one begs the big one: What will a public library look like in the future? No one has a definitive answer, and I won't presume to offer one here, nor is there likely to be a single answer, as each public library should reflect its own community's unique needs. But it's a question we should frequently ask ourselves, and it's an appropriate one for an age of disruption. An equally important question is, what does literacy look like in an age of information overload? Pedagogics, educators, and information professionals are rightly consumed with this question and its implications for everything from childhood development and early learning to social mores, civility, and even democracy itself. We have an opportunity to guide and support our community in understanding the importance of multiple literacies and how essential they are to 21st century life. This theme will appear more and more in our programming and our visual merchandising, and it will inform our pursuit of new partnerships as well as library messaging. And as always, it will be something we continue to help our users grapple with, one patron at a time. Just as our collections are evolving, so too is the concept of authorship. Once an exclusive purview of the few, content creation is now widely practiced by many. Indeed, the Internet as we know it depends entirely on the creation of user-generated content. We have opportunities to not only facilitate a variety of content creation on the part of library patrons, but to even incorporate their work, both in the context of what it signifies on its own merit and how we offer it to the public. In that sense, it can play an important role as part of our effort to represent a diverse array of perspectives and opinions. And of course, this begs another big question: What role should individually published works play in our collection development philosophy? For instance, we have a large zine collection here at the downtown library representing a vast range of subject matter. Some titles are widely published in review, but most are simply created and distributed by individuals and small groups wishing to express themselves or contribute to a conversation. Many people hope to see public libraries provide more platforms for independent literary and artistic expression. We already have an impressive collection of visual and interactive artwork and music produced in our digital creativity spaces. We also have a growing collection of local and independent authors who've submitted their work to the library. These works and their connection to the wider Bloomington cultural scene represent another opportunity for MCPL to be a conduit for literary and artistic expression, as a starting point for cultivating interest in creative work, as a resource for developing skills for creation, and perhaps even as a platform for curating and distributing some of this work. In an analog world, the cornerstone of collection development is an acknowledgement of and adherence to the standards of publication, the notion that published works exist because they represent a degree of exceptionalism and expertise and therefore constitute legitimate contributions to larger historical conversations. Libraries acknowledge this by curating collections built on canonical works and well-reviewed newer publications from reputable sources, and we are right in doing so. But our digital world now provides opportunities to reexamine this paradigm and to strike a new balance between professionally and independently published works in the library. These questions about content, literacy, and collection development suggest to me some of the greatest opportunities for us to further define our role as an essential 21st century community service. Second, we have opportunities to meet the needs of students, teachers, and families throughout Monroe County through new and continued school partnerships. MCPL has long partnered with our friends at MCCSC, RBB, TPS, Harmony, and other local schools to support their curricular work and to bring students into the library from an early age. Our respective missions align in so many ways, and the needs of our school partners are significant. We at the library should continue to ask ourselves: Are the many resources we provide in line with their actual needs? What programs can we develop to meet students and teachers in their own physical and virtual classrooms? Are the library's modes of access to digital resources, physical collections, and even our facilities intuitive enough to reach every student in our community? The library's physical proximity to schools plays an important role in connecting with students. Our Ellisville Branch Library is geographically very close to the RBB school system, as well as the Seven Oaks Classical School, and this proximity makes MCPL a part of many Ellisville community students' daily routine. The Project School is just a few blocks away from our downtown library and not only brings classes in to browse collections and to attend programs, but also makes great use of this very space here, our uniquely sophisticated auditorium. And by the way, this is something that not many public libraries have. So MCPL has become almost like a second home to TPS students and teachers, and many of them are now counted among our most frequent patrons and greatest power users. And it's hard to improve on the proximity between Bachelor Middle School and the site of what will be our newest facility. Literally no more than a five-minute walk through charming Bachelor Woods, BMS students will find their second home in MCPL's Southwest Branch Library. The opportunity to develop a lasting partnership with BMS, to work more closely with teachers on a daily basis, and to bring more Monroe County students into the library than ever before is one of the most unique that MCPL and MCCSC have collectively ever had. And I hope that this partnership of proximity will open doors to even more collaboration with our friends at MCCSC going forward. Looking beyond the opening of our Southwest Branch Library in early 2023, we can see a future in which MCPL brings that physical experience to more areas of the county than ever before through expanded outreach services. For many patrons, the value of having a mobile library branch such as our Bookmobile bring MCPL resources to their neighborhood cannot be overstated. For those who can't travel to the library or to one of our 28 weekly Bookmobile stops, our house call service takes library materials directly to their door. As we continually pursue ways to diversify our modes of access, to expand our registered patron base, and to reach more and more Monroe County citizens, we can see a future in which our Outreach Services Department truly becomes our fourth branch library. The physical library experience is arguably one of the most valued and meaningful for library patrons, but change in this age of digital disruption is exponential, and high-speed Internet access is an increasingly important resource for students. It's a priority shared by MCPL, our community schools, and the city of Bloomington itself. Education and the support of new literacies relies more and more on Internet access, and there are opportunities for these three public entities to work together to expand access however we can. Mobile Internet hotspots, single sign-on authentication protocols, and expanded e-access programs for digital collections, whatever solutions we pursue, we can partner with area school administrators and educators to implement them in sustainable ways. There is, of course, another school in our community, and I think it's appropriate to say that it's something of a defining entity in Bloomington. Indiana University sets a tone for so much of what our city is about: education, culture, exploration, service, and civility. So let's ask ourselves: How can MCPL's new commitment to improved program coordination foster new partnerships with IU? How can we at the library benefit from the expertise and specialization offered by our celebrated public university? And can MCPL be a bridge between IU and Monroe County at large? We do have many important connections with IU, and I think it only makes sense for our public library and our public university to work together wherever possible to develop lasting partnerships. And finally, we now have a crucial opportunity to develop a new workplace culture here at MCPL, one that is built on trust and inclusive dialogue. We have faced many challenges over the years regarding staff roles, communication, and internal dynamics, and we haven't always done our best to set clear expectations or to hold ourselves accountable for how we operate and communicate with one another. Our recent commitment to continuous improvement in the workplace is the first important step in acknowledging the challenges we've faced in the past. It is also a roadmap for discovering who we want to be. And that word "discovery" is important because it reflects the collaborative process we've embraced. And because it's collaborative, it is not prescriptive. In other words, we are in the process of discovering what kind of organization we are going to be. This starts with intentional and transparent design of organizational structure, something we've worked hard to achieve this past year and which will continue to evolve as we assess the efficacy of our most recent changes to roles and responsibilities across departments. It includes the adoption of workplace norms centered around mutual responsibility and respect, encouraging participation in the decision-making process and connecting the dots for our staff along the way. And it necessitates a more measured pace of change than we've experienced over the past few years. Many MCPL staff will readily admit that change has come at breakneck speed and seemingly from all angles. Some of this is needed in order to build a new culture in the workplace, and some of this is driven by external factors. But the degree of intense and ongoing change we at MCPL have undergone should not be mistaken for the new norm. Our focus and our mission is long-term, and we will establish a proper tempo for change as we move forward. We've made a great start laying this new foundation for workplace culture, and there's much more for us to do in the coming years. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about one of our core values as an organization, and that is equity, and specifically what diversity, equity, and inclusion can look like at MCPL. It starts with us demonstrating how equity is a tenet of public library service. Our vision is that of a knowledgeable, inclusive, diverse, and engaged community empowered by MCPL. That first word, knowledgeable, depends on our ability to provide free and equitable access to all of our services. The free part is somewhat self-explanatory, but the equitable part is more complicated. To truly ensure fair and impartial access to our services, we have to be able to talk about institutional inequities and to identify them within our own policies, procedures, and practices. And to do that, we need to educate ourselves about how implicit biases may exist or emerge in our structural approach to providing library service. For MCPL staff, this means that DEI literacy will be a professional development priority, one we will articulate as part of every employee's personal work plan and one we will support through the work of our new organizational development department. We will also need to formalize the application of an equity lens to our policies and practices. We have a proposal to establish a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee at MCPL, and I see this group playing a critical role in that formalization, helping to review draft policy updates to make sure that the language and tone we use reflects a diverse range of experience and perspective, and above all, does not implicitly exclude anyone. The DEI Committee will help us connect with other groups and organizations in our community who've embraced this set of values and will help us develop specific goals and identify opportunities for professional development surrounding equity in the workplace. It may even play an internal education role itself. Policies and procedures set the framework, but it's our delivery that matters most. Collection development, program planning, visual merchandising in our facilities and through our web presence, and library messaging across the community are the main components to that delivery. We take these deliverables very seriously, and we've made great effort in recent years to consider how each reflects our institutional values. We must continue to examine these through the same equity lens we apply to our internal policies, and ultimately, this should shape an aspect of how we think about and talk about MCPL. For example, developing collections that represent diverse backgrounds and experiences will continue to be a priority for us, this despite the increasing challenges to intellectual freedom in libraries posed by numerous campaigns to either impose restrictions on what we can select or remove items from our collections entirely. Programs that speak directly to the lived experiences of our patrons will also continue to be a priority. And like our collections, these programs will serve as both mirrors and windows, mirrors for those who see themselves better represented by our services, and windows for those who will have more opportunities to learn about the lived experiences of others. Library displays and community messaging that draw patrons in to learn more about others' experiences while also generating a desire on the part of patrons to share more about their own. This is one of the ways in which we achieve the fourth part of that vision statement: An engaged community empowered by MCPL. We have an opportunity to set an example here in Monroe County in terms of workplace culture and employment. We can take steps toward actively recruiting staff with a diverse range of experience and perspective. In hiring new staff, we should ask ourselves: What qualities and perspectives do we lack? And how would bringing those perspectives to MCPL have a positive impact on our service to the community? This also means looking beyond traditional employment qualifications to the core of a candidate's character and potential. It sometimes requires reexamining traditional educational prerequisites for many library positions in order to bypass implicit barriers to career development faced by many promising would-be candidates. Above all, it means understanding that diversity is a broad and complex idea. It encompasses race, gender identity and expression, language and nationality, age, socioeconomics, and it encompasses the physical and neurological uniqueness of everyone we work with and serve. I was recently asked what my philosophy of diversity, equity, and inclusion might be, and I admit that I hadn't yet thought about it on that level. But I've been asking myself that question ever since. And as many of you who know me won't be surprised to hear, it dawned on me while riding my bike home from work one night. I would say that my personal philosophy regarding DEI in the workplace is as follows: There are two main reasons why organizations should embrace diversity, equity, and inclusion. The first and most important reason is ethical. Simply put, it serves a greater humanitarian purpose above and beyond our stated mission. As a library, we directly serve and support individuals. Our true product, if we want to call it that, is a process of discovery that can contribute to enlightenment on the part of library users. Whatever that enlightenment may look like, one of its greatest manifestations is a desire to strengthen community. We are now at a crucial point in our country's history where we can openly acknowledge inequities, talk about the systems that perpetuate those inequities, and find ways to change our systems to be more inclusive. From that perspective, what better organization than a public library to embrace this humanitarian position? The second reason is more practical. The world is getting smaller. There are more of us on this planet than ever before, and we share limited space and limited resources. But we also share limitless ideas and dreams. No organization or business can thrive in this environment without a commitment to adaptation and a desire to adopt varied perspectives on its mission and its operations. What better way to ensure that adaptability than to embrace a diverse range of backgrounds and experiences in order to reach more people and to remain flexible in the face of every new challenge? Monroe County Public Library has long been committed to diversity and inclusion among its users. Once again, we're at a crucial point in our history in which that commitment needs to be seen in every aspect of what we do, and the next 10 years will present opportunities for us to put into practice the values we espouse. I'd like to conclude by sharing a little bit about myself, who I am, and where I come from. I was born and raised in Blacksburg, Virginia, a small college town very similar to Bloomington, which probably explains why, after my family moved to Indiana in the early 1990s, I quickly found my way from Indy down to Bloomington for record stores, performances at Rhino's All-Ages Club, coffee at the Runcible Spoon, and to wander the overgrown abandoned train tracks running south through what is now Switchyard Park. And if that sounds like a melodramatic music video from the 80s, that suited me just fine. I studied English and art history at IU, and it was there that I first got into library work as part of the House of Residence Library System, checking out books and movies to students in every dorm library across campus. And to this day, I count the Collins Library among my favorite physical library spaces. From there, I moved to Cincinnati and worked in the Outreach Services Department at the Public Library of Cincinnati in Hamilton County, while also doing part-time work as a shelve and a circulation clerk across the river at the Kenton County Public Library in Covington, Kentucky. I got my MLS in 2006 from IU's School of Library and Information Science, now called the School of Informatics. I got my first professional librarian position that same year at Lake Forest Academy, an independent boarding school just north of Chicago. Over an eight-year period, I served as library director, taught electronic music production and performance, and eventually became Academic Technology Director, focusing on the implementation of one-to-one technology solutions in the classroom and working to build a new information, literacy, and media production facility on campus. In 2014, I became the Director of the Putnam County Public Library in Greencastle, Indiana. Our focus was on building renovation and facilities expansion, repurposing many existing spaces for more collaborative use, and restructuring both our public services and internal services departments to have a wider reach across the county and to ensure operational consistency. In 2018, I came to MCPL in the role of the Access and Content Services Manager. I'm proud to have helped to continue our tradition of first-rate collection development while finding new ways to enhance our digital collections and reduce access barriers to all of our resources. In 2020, I was privileged to accept the position of Associate Director. And over the past year and a half, we've successfully managed enormous operational pressures imposed by the global pandemic, have provided safe and responsive services to the public despite those pressures, and we've begun the very important work that is our continuous improvement project. Four years isn't very long, and though I've lived in Bloomington on and off since 1997, I'm still a relative newcomer to MCPL. Finally, I would like to share some of my core beliefs as a librarian and as a leader. I believe that everyone has both the ability and the responsibility to think for themselves. I believe that public libraries, through responsive collection development programs and services, have a responsibility to facilitate that independence of thought, and we should never lose sight of that. And I believe that the way we support and facilitate intellectual freedom will continually be redefined by digital technologies and at greater speeds and with ever greater implications for the average citizen. My approach to leadership can be summed up as follows: I like to ask questions, big questions, about the nature of our work and its importance in the lives of our patrons. And I like to work with colleagues and constituents to develop answers to those questions. I like to listen. It's how I understand my surroundings, and I have found that careful and persistent listening is a useful strategy for garnering and understanding multiple perspectives while strategizing and making institutional decisions. And I like to talk, to build relationships with groups, to build rapport with peers and stakeholders in order to cultivate a wide circle of discussion and engagement. I hope these words provide some insight into who I am and what I hope to continue to offer MCPL and our community in the future. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Okay, it is now time that if the public, the audience, has questions for Greer, Lorraine's coming around to collect those note cards. So if you all just make sure they make their way down to her. Okay. Do we have any from Facebook? David, did you have a question or just writing notes?
I'm working on it.
Okay, all right, I'll get back to you. Okay. So the first one is, tell us how you will guide MCPL into the future of our information digital environments, I think? Is that right? Kathy?
Economies.
Economies, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, so that's a big part of what I believe public libraries need to do. And as far as I'm concerned, it starts with our staff, which means a core set of digital literacies is a basic expectation for employment. We have positions that are far more specialized in terms of delivering digital literacy instruction and support, but there is a baseline digital literacy understanding that library and information professionals need to have. We need to have that so that we can provide programs and onsite support for different entities who have different levels of need and do it with confidence and lead the way in terms of that shift I was talking about at the beginning, which is, and I use the book because it's easy target, but it's really not about the book. It's about nonlinear modes of communication and experience with content. So we have to understand that, and our staff have to understand that, if we're going to help everyone in the community develop these skills. So for me, it starts with staff and a basic expectation, and then there's also a degree of intentional programming that we need to look at doing. We do a lot of this, but we're looking at hiring some positions and starting some new programs that are going to go even further. I do think that our connection with the school is an obvious way to do this, but it's going to be a big theme for public libraries for, I think, a lot, if not most, public libraries in the U.S. going forward.
All right. Have your question?
The next question is, among the many varied duties of a director, it is important to have face-to-face relationships with your staff. MCPL has a lot of staff in two soon-to-be three branches. How will you make those face-to-face connections with consideration to the busy schedule of a director?
Very good question, and I'm not going to pretend to have a perfect answer to this other than to say it's more or less at the top of my notes. I believe that it starts with knowing people by their names, by their positions, by their duties, and if possible, a little bit about their background, and then making sure that it is literally built into your schedule. So a director's schedule is taxing, and it's one of those, like a lot of administrative roles, you have a schedule where you're never caught up, and you're always working a month, a year, multiple years in advance. So there's a degree of flexibility in one's schedule that should allow for making time to get to know staff or building rapport, making sure that everybody who works at the library is known on a face-to-face and name-by-name basis with the director. But it does take a concerted effort to build it into one's schedule. So this is something that a number of us in management here at MCPL have been talking about actively for the last year or so, and there are strategies for doing it, but there are also easy ways to slip into not seeing people for weeks or even months on end. So I think ultimately, it's a conscious effort, and it starts with the value, valuing that need. So it's a work in progress.
Okay, the next question is, how do you plan to incorporate employees with Spanish and other languages into the vital program?
That's a very good question. I really don't have a good answer to that, other than to look to our staff and community partners who have expertise and can guide us. And I say that because I think without having a really good plan in hand, if we And I say that because I think without having a really good plan in hand, if we try to do it formally, without having that expertise, we won't reach the people that we really need to reach. So this is a great question. This is something I look forward to talking to our outreach folks and our vital folks about.
Okay, and finally, unless there's any more questions out there, when content creation is by everyone, how do we go about selecting materials in the absence of market approval?
Yeah, very good question. Well, I think market approval will still play a big role in our collection development. The question is, how do you incorporate material that isn't approved by the marketplace, and what is that balance that you strike? And when you're at that point, and so I'll use the zine collection or maybe some of our digital creativity work as an example, who becomes the arbiter? Is it our selectors in Access and Content Services? Do we outline this in our collection development policy and have the same set of metrics for evaluation for individually published work that we do for market-reviewed work? I think we probably do. The danger is, if we don't set some metrics for ourselves, we're going to wind up opening the door to everything, and then nothing becomes of value. You know, so this is the argument that I've heard when we have conversations about changes to our collection development policy, and I think it's a worthy argument. But ultimately, I think that this is important for libraries, and I included it in my presentation because it's inevitable. I mean, if we live in a world in which you can publish your own book, or release your own music, or create your own video game, and you have the means for distributing it as effectively, if not more effectively, than the marketplace has in the past, then what are we going to do in response as a library? If we stick with just market-reviewed material, then we're basically a canonical organization. And there are arguments for keeping that, but I think they're inconsistent with moving with the 21st century and everything about digital literacies that we talked about earlier. So we are going to have to strike a balance, and we are going to have to define the metrics that say, this is worthy of including, and maybe this isn't. And I don't know what that looks like yet. That's why we have a lot of smart librarians and collection development specialists who will work with us on that.
Okay, are there any other questions that anyone would like to ask? All right, seeing none, well, Greer, thank you very much for your presentation and for answering the questions.
Thank you.
Okay, and board members, since this is an official meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
They'll move.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you.